Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Special Board Meeting Work Session. Tonight is Tuesday, February fifteenth. Call the meeting to order. Mr. Saluka, can I have roll call please?
Yes, Mr. Jubey.
Here.
Ms. King.
Here.
Ms. Morrison.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mrs. Daniels.
Here. Can I motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So moved.
Mr. Saluka, that was moved by Mr. Jubey and second by Ms. Thomas. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Jubey?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yeah.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. Good evening, and I would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight for this special opportunity. The next item on our agenda tonight is a resolution honoring our beloved member of the board, Mr. Dobies, who served the Garfield High School District for many years. It's such an honor for us as the Board of Education to have the opportunity tonight to present this resolution and dedication of this boardroom to Mr. Bob Dobies. Tonight, I would like to have his dear friend, Mr. Jubey, read the resolution that is on the table for vote. Madam President, do we need a motion first? Do we need a motion first?
You can go either way. I think we can read it first and then a motion to approve it.
Thank you.
Resolution honoring the service of Robert A. Dobies. At the Garfield Heights City Schools. Where's the Garfield? Excuse me. Where's the Garfield Heights City Schools seeks to commemorate the honorable public service of the late Robert A. Dobie Senior, longtime members of the Garfield Heights Board of Education. And whereas Bob, as he was affectionately known by those, was fully used close. Was a nineteen seventy seven citizen Garfield Heights High School. And attended the Garfield Heights Junior High and makefully committed and involved in his life for show three cents. While attended the Garfield Heights City Schools. And whereas Bob was actively involved in teachers' organization as a driver for many years, advocating for fair wages and equality in the workplace, and was also personally involved with the mayor declared Golden Gloves Boxing Association, serving as vice president and also as a ringside announcer. And whereas Bob served the city of Garfield Heights as recreation director, starting new and creative initiatives to further involve the youth in our community. And has been described by the former city of Garfield Heights Mayor Dick Klow as not only the most thorough and efficient employee, but someone who devotedly ran the programs of the recreation department, always advocating the Garfield Heights, I'm sorry, advocating for the community and demonstrating the true heart of gold. And whereas Bob was a longtime member of the Garfield Heights Athletic Boosters and Little Bull Run Wrestling Program, helping to coach the youth in Garfield Heights communities for many years and prompting a lifelong passion for engaging children in constructive activities through the school district. And whereas Bob was first elected to the Garfield Heights Board of Education in two thousand and five and took office in two thousand and six and was currently serving in his fifteenth year. Having served that time as president, vice president, city liaison, and a member of the student activities committee. Whereas Bob demonstrated true love for this district and its students by being fair with his decision-making and a proven willingness to listen to all parties involved in the discussion, but a firmness in his convictions as to what was right in his eyes for the Garfield Heights City Schools. A dedication to fiscal responsibility and an overall compassion for staff, students, and everyone in the school family. Therefore, be it resolved that Robert A. Dobies Senior is commended as a true Garfield Heights City Bulldog and is celebrated for his public service to this community and his advocacy for the youth of the city. Be it for the reason, so that heads for the Garfield Heights Board of Education. Will be known as Robert A. Dobie Senior Board of Education.
Madam President, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the motion, the resolution as read and that this will be known as the Robert A. Dobies Board of Education. Sorry. That was moved by Ms. King and second by Mr. Jubey. Is there any discussions or comments for the vote? Mr. Saluka, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. King.
Yes.
Mr. Jubey.
Before I vote, I was my friend, calling in classroom for over fifty years. This is a great, and as a reenactor, and I'm glad we're restoring this dedication for Bob. And I vote yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yeah.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes. By the vote of the Board of Education, we hereby dedicate the Garfield Heights City School District Boardroom to Robert Dobies. Mr. Hanky?
First of all, thank you all for coming. I was able to work with Mr. Dobies for very, two different capacities, and this is a wonderful thing. Before we move on with the agenda, the Board of Education would like to take a photo with the plaque and move along from there. Mr. Dobies, to me, was a man who, as Mr. Jubey said, he said his piece, but when he was done, he hit you on the back and say, let's do it this way or that way. He was a wonderful man and became a great friend of mine. And I'm just, I'm just so pleased we could do this for him and then so pleased the Board of Education was able to put this together. And this plaque is going to have a place of honor right outside the boardroom, so when people come in, they're going to see that right when they enter the boardroom for a meeting. And we'll be hanging that up tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Hanky. And also if the family wants to take pictures, they have an opportunity.
Absolutely, yeah, if you want to take some pictures, the family, if you want to come up and take some pictures with the plaque before we hang it up tomorrow. Let's try to get the board situated first here and do a picture.
And so the family, this school board is going to give you an official copy of the resolution.
And a nice piece of parchment paper we're going to give you. Mayor, do you mind if I work to get dressed and organize up? I'm sorry, if I might if I work to get dressed and organize the boardroom of all that, the copoformations. I'll give you this call, that's okay. I'm sorry. Any family members want to come up and take a picture with the plaque? Please, yeah. That would be great if we could have a family picture. Yeah, yeah.
He says, could they take their mask off for the picture?
For the picture, yeah, go ahead, that's fine. Look there first and then I'll get one.
Do you guys like to have a glance? We're working on a schedule, no problem. So let's talk. We just need to thank you all. Wasn't so kind of doing this.
For whatever reason, he just became so dedicated to the city. Thank you all.
Hanky did say he was a wonderful guy, he was okay.
You all are certainly welcome to stay. We're going to be going over some business. You're certainly what we love. We love to have folks listen to what we're doing here in the school district. This is also a good opportunity if you'd like to, we'd be fine too. But either way.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda this evening. We have a presentation regarding the technology update that is going to be facilitated by Sheri Bailey.
Thank you very much, President Daniels, the school board, Mr. Hanky, for allowing me to have this opportunity. Just going to take a moment here and I'm going to share my screen and turn on the projector and then we will. So I'm sharing the presentation, so for those in YouTube land, you will be able to see that and then in here we can watch it here. So, thank you very much. I was really looking forward to presenting to the school board. I was looking back at some of my notes and it had been twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then the pandemic hit. So it's been a while and I just wanted to take this opportunity and talk about some of the wonderful things that we're doing in technology in EMIS. So the first thing I wanted to do, I invited the tech team here, I call them the tech team, techies, whatever you want to call them. I wanted to, I asked them to come so I could introduce them. Jim Kassuta couldn't be with us today, he's our network manager. Tim Sobisinski, he's our network technician. Jack of all trades, master of breaking and fixing Chromebooks and you name it. Not breaking, fixing, fixing them.
Well, you know, if I need to break.
Yes. Robin Shamblyn, who is a technology assistant. And Mary Ann Marshall, also technology assistant. Robin and Mary Ann, Robin's been here twenty-eight years with us. Mary Ann has been here twenty-six years with us. I've always felt so incredibly fortunate that we've all been working together since the early two thousands and we've stayed a team for this entire time and that's not always the way things are and I'm very, very thankful for that. Robin and Mary Ann are going to be leaving us this year, they're both retiring, so I don't know, we're missing, going to be missing two-fifths of our staff next year. So it's going to be a little bit of a rude awakening, I think, for me anyways. So I'm just going to sit here and go through and advance this. So what do we do in the technology department? I'm going to talk about technology first and EMIS second. We maintain district systems that support student learning, teacher instruction, and the business side of running our school district. Our goal is always to have a hundred percent uptime for all of our students, all of our teachers, all of our staff in the district. You know, a hundred percent is not always possible, but that's always the goal. So what do we support? We support a lot of different things, hardware. So while we had a lot of Chromebooks before the pandemic started, we now are one-to-one where all of our students have a Chromebook. Our very little ones have iPads, but all of our students have Chromebooks. We have over thirty-five hundred in the district that we support now. Middle school and high school students take them home. Elementary school students, K five, often they stay in the school, but you know, we've had times of school year where we've had to do some remote learning, so those have gone homes, the students have been able to work. We have iPads for our preschool, for kindergarten, special education students and teachers. So we have over seven hundred iPads that we support. PCs for all teachers, staffs, we have some student computer labs that have PCs and then it's over six hundred and forty-three. So what do we support? We support door access control system. In the district, we have an AMAG system, card reader system, and we have an ID printer here at the Board of Education, human resources. Debbie Schiferstein prints IDs, they're lost, broken, need replaced, but she prints them all for all of our new staff here. We have forty-eight card readers in the district. We support security camera system. We have an Exact Vision system in all of our buildings. We have eleven servers. And so each one of those servers has all the cameras in that building. They record video back to those servers, so we maintain updates on them, updates on cameras, do initial troubleshooting. For the security cameras in the district, this is what we have. We have eleven at the transportation center, four at the bus garage, a hundred and thirty-five at the high school. Forty-four at Elmwood, fifty-four at Maple Leaf, ninety-five at middle school, William Foster forty-nine, and central office fourteen, to a grand total of four hundred and six cameras. One of the things I do every morning is I connect to our Exact Vision software and I check all the cameras and make sure they're all up. Of those cameras, we have a hundred and seventeen that are analog, which means when they die, they're older cameras, and when they die, we need to replace them, we need to add network cables, we need to replace some of digital cameras. So we actually, particularly, a lot of those happen to be at the high school, not all, but we have cameras at the high school that are circa two thousand and four, still working. So we support our fiber connections between all of our buildings. We support the network equipment in all of our wiring closets. This is a picture of the high school's wiring closet. It's one of my favorites because it's the biggest and we kind of got a chance to build it when they built the high school and designed it the way we wanted. But all of that network equipment we manage, we have networking software that we use that we get a text when anything's down, so we can make a good decision about responding, even if it's in the evening or the morning, and how important that equipment is to the operation of school the next day. We support our battery backups for all of our wiring closets. So we have, they call them UPSs, uninterrupted power supplies. Because when you have a battery backup system in all of your buildings, if we lose power, when we lose power, the equipment in all those closets stay up. So by keeping that equipment up, it also keeps up the access points for wireless in the building, keeps up all of our telephones. Obviously, a desktop that's on power does not stay up, but all of our laptops, Chromebooks, all of those things would stay connected to the internet. We make sure that we have an eight-hour backup for all of our main closets because we don't want to lose power and have systems go down during the school day. This one's particularly a battery backup that's at the high school, which is connected to the generator. So in theory, that closet should never go down. You know, the generator kicks on, keeps that whole closet up and all of our systems working. This is a picture of one of our server clusters, if you will. We have twenty-four district servers. We have two units, two systems, one in our high school and one in the middle school. And those back up to each other across the fiber network across the city. You know, should we ever have any kind of a catastrophe happening, in theory, one happened in both buildings, in both end of town, but that's why we back up across the fiber. We also back up to Connect, which is our ITC, and that is considered an off-site backup. So if something should happen to both of these systems, we have a nightly backup that backs off off-site. We support a lot of programs for a lot of the different departments and areas in the district. One program is TransFinder, and by support, I mean, we assisted in installing it, we make sure it's backed up, we make sure it's working right. If it's down, we try and troubleshoot. TransFinder is transportation software, uses this for bus routing. PeopleWorks, we have a server for PeopleWorks that handles all of our HR information about our staff. Meals Plus is a cafeteria program that we use and it handles, you know, when they, all the lunches and free reduced lunch and everything. We support printers and copiers. So we use a program called Paper Cut and that manages the printing and copying totals, allocations, so we can make sure that, you know, people aren't excessively printing and copying, although now with Google and Google Classroom, that's just not something we do so much anymore. But there's a hundred and five of them in all of the school buildings. We support a program called DocuWare, which is a program that lets us take paper, scan it, and then be able to store the digital copy, so we don't have the paper copies anymore. That's something that's really used up at the central office. Transcripts, IEPs, HR department uses it, and finances using it for accounts payable. PD Express, which is actually, this one is a web-based server. LPGC uses that for teacher licensure renewals. Aruba Central is our software that manages all of our district wireless access points. We have over four hundred access points in the district and that lets us see if something's up, something's down. What's Up Gold is the system that we use to do our network management. So I'll get text messages, maybe often, maybe not often, but we get messages when a battery backup goes on, goes on. So that means we have a power outage. You know, the middle school, there's different sides of town with different power feeding into things, so sometimes the middle school will get these little blips, you know, and it just goes on and off, which, you know, we've learned to understand. But the What's Up Gold gives us a text message if anything goes down, any network equipment, our camera servers. So we can look at it and see if we can make a decision, so it won't impact school the next day, or while we're here, we know to respond to it. We manage sofa antivirus software, which we have sofa on for all of our software. Antivirus, it's security software. WSUS server is a Microsoft updates. That information gets pulled down from Microsoft and then sent out to all of our PCs in the district. We support the Cisco Phone System, and the Cisco Phone System has over five hundred and thirty phones in all of our classrooms. Jim sets up voicemail, new accounts naming. We have a server now that's cloud-based, Denoma, that does our relay from voicemail to Gmail. We support internet filtering. We have two systems. We use Cisco Umbrella, that's housed at Connect, but we manage it. It supports filtering for all of our PCs and Macs in the district. Then we use Go Guardian for all of our Chromebooks that filters the internet at school and at home. We have a firewall in place to keep bad actors out and anybody, you know, that hopefully is not trying to hack into our school district. But the firewall is in place, the Connect has a firewall, but then we also have our own. We're doing a lot more with cybersecurity. I think that's like the next big pitch. We've started sending out information to our staff about turning on multi-factor authentication for their Google accounts by May first. And this is definitely going to be increasing with leaps and bounds. Public School Works is a program that, through HR, that we all go through videos and answer questions. There's some really good areas in there related to malware, identifying spam. So we support Google and everything Google. You know, we became a Google district a few years ago now, quite a few years ago. But now, when we went with the pandemic, who classroom was our means for teaching? So whether it's Gmail and Google Drive and calendars and all of that. This, I think, in a lot of ways, although we've been, I've been talking about the business of school, this is really the big push, the big thing. You know, with teaching and learning, that's what we're all about in teaching our students. And when the teaching and learning department identifies new curriculum or something that will be really good assessments, like we use NWA map and we use Acadians. All of that now, most of it, I mean, there's some things we might have to do separately, but we use ClassLink to roster the curricular software and I can't express to you how wonderful that is. Our student information is pulled in there and depending what program, what grade a student's in, what building they're in, then they get that program already rostered on their ClassLink dashboard. As far as priorities, when we are supporting things in the district, as far as, you know, how we know what to handle, what to fix, what to, who to go to first, high priority tickets are always this, with our students. If a student isn't set up in a curricular program, they don't have their account, they can't log into their Chromebook, or the Chromebook's not working, it's a really high priority because a kid, a student that can't participate in a classroom or in what's being asked of them, you know, certainly would be disengaged and potentially maybe a behavior problem. So student tickets are really high priority. Teacher's ability to teach, you know, if there's a desktop in a classroom that's down and the teacher can't be presenting what they need to present, that's a huge priority ticket for us. And in general, staff members not able to do their job. So if there's a desktop and no matter what department you're in, those are the things that we put, give a higher priority to than maybe one printer that's down in a building, but there's seven others that you can print to. So how we do that? We do that with a program called School Dude. I'm not going to give you all the details, but people know that it's my favorite program in the world. Since, oh gosh, as of February seventh, since August first, we've had three thousand three hundred and sixty-five tickets. This is one of the graphs we get in the program. It's broken down by like different accounts, copiers, printers, Chromebooks, iPad, software, progress book, ID cards. And it keeps us sane because people open a ticket and all five of us see it. And while we might handle different issues, potentially more so than somebody else, like I typically handle the progress book issues. So because the five of us see it, we might get ahold of each other and say, hey, did you see there's a ticket for so-and-so who can't get a progress book? So it keeps us honest. If they stay there till we close them, we update it, emails the teacher, the staff member. Now, these Chromebook tickets that you see in here are not Chromebooks for our students, that's a separate system. So here's just a breakdown by building, you know, so obviously more students, more staff, more tickets. One-to-one manager is a program that we purchased right before the pandemic and boy, am I glad that we did. Because what this does is it pulls our students into one-to-one manager, pulls all our devices, all of our devices are listed in Google Admin, pulls all that in, and then we can assign students at the beginning of the school year. And during the pandemic, we assigned a device to a student, so we knew who was assigned what device. Since August, we've had seven hundred repair tickets, two hundred and thirty-one lost devices, and nine hundred and ninety-one forgotten devices. So essentially what that means is, especially middle school and high school, they come to school, they left it at home, we give them loners. The library clerks in the four buildings, the middle school doesn't have a library clerk, have been very helpful. very helpful in helping us with assigning loner devices or helping us with, you know, reaching out to people in the buildings. Robin and Mary Ann work a lot with that, actually, and some of the initial stuff in handling forgot devices. Typically Mondays are good days for that. Tim, like I said, although he does a lot with managing our iPads and managing some of our PCs, does a lot with fixing them and diagnosing them, as well as Robin and Mary Ann. They were in the office today replacing screens, so, you know, it was a busy day. We have had, we have offered the last two years Chromebook insurance. Like, two years ago was eighteen dollars, this year it was ten. And we had three hundred and thirty-one students' families participate in that. Last week, Mr. Hanky presented about the strategic plan and things that we're working on related to that. You know, in the area, and these are just a few examples. But for example, in the area of teaching and learning, when they're talking about the assessment software and a program called Branching Minds that we use to track interventions, contact with families. All of that is rostered via ClassLink. Acadiants is a little bit more of a manual update, but essentially, though, you know, we, we make sure that we keep all the students in there, so the teachers can do the progress monitoring and assessments that they need to. As far as the wellness pillar, a couple of programs that I thought I had mentioned is Ripple Effects is something that the high school uses. That gets rostered through ClassLink, where all of our students get loaded into that. Another one is PBIS Rewards. That's a K-5 program that the teachers are using to award points to our students, positive behavior points. And then the facilities and learning resources goal. In it, below the actual goal, Mr. Hanky asked us to put in some action items in there, too. One of the things that I have tried to work a lot on is having a five-year plan for updating equipment, so we make sure our equipment doesn't get old. We try not to replace everything at the same time, so it helps with the budget. But there's also systems like camera systems and card reader systems that you need to look at when we initially purchase things and how we're going to continue to update them and keep them to be current. So we have the network equipment and learning systems, updating iPads, it's also something that, you know, Chromebooks. One other thing that we have in the strategic plan is the network evaluation. This is a new service that Connect offered this year to its members. Chris and Al mentioned this, and, you know, sometimes you really don't know what you don't know. You think you have a really good plan and how you're going to keep everything current and update everything. But they offered this, and we took them up on it. So they came out and they've spent a lot of time with us, and they looked at everything. They looked at card readers, cameras, switches, you name it. And they're going to come back with recommendations, and then this will be then put in the plan for moving forward and, you know, things that we need to think about. Some things that we put, you know, and I mentioned this already a little bit about the technology replacement plan, but we look at this over a course of five years, you know, some businesses do things sooner, but we look at making sure that we're keeping things current. So it says we have a plan till 2023, which is true. But every time we purchase something, we sort of update that year for the year, the years that they will be coming up in the future. You know, computer we buy in 2018 is going to need to be replaced in 2023, and, and so it continues. Projects that we're thinking about for next school year. These are some of the things that are on the horizons. One of the things that we've used for a very long time now is the E-Rate program. It's a federal program. It allows schools to purchase access to internet, to purchase network equipment for all of our schools at a reduced rate that's based on free and reduced lunch data. We're eligible for ninety percent off on our internet, and we're eligible for eighty percent, eighty-five percent, I'm sorry, off on network equipment. So based on age, the high school really needs a refresh in the network equipment and all the closets. And we have the E-Rate, essentially, it's a big document out there right now, where vendors then can apply for, they can submit what they would recommend based on what we're asking for. And when we pick a vendor, which won't be till end of February, March, ultimately, we only pay for fifteen percent of it, which is a really wonderful thing. We're definitely looking at implementing additional cybersecurity procedures and more training when it comes to things like, you know, evaluating spam and malware and things that we can do to keep, to keep our equipment in the district safer. We're looking at, and this is something that we talked about as a group with looking at some of our security cameras. Replacement of, actually, that should have said the analog security cameras, not additional. Replace end-of-life Chromebooks. We have about eight hundred that are going to be end-of-life this coming up June. Replacing teacher desktops with laptops for more mobility. So those are things that we're looking at for the next school year. Now, I put EMIS department on here, and I really don't want you to think that this is any less important than technology. I just knew this was going to be a little bit long, and at the moment, our EMIS department is me. Because we don't have anybody right now. Dante Johnson, who was our EMIS supervisor, resigned about a week and a half ago, so we're in the process of hiring. Leanne and Sean and I are going to be interviewing some people this week. Connect is supporting us with, with a staff member that's also helping us, so that doesn't mean it's not important, because, boy, is it important. So one of the things that I put together kind of a while ago is just a little bit of a breakdown of some of the systems and some of the things that, you know, what exactly is EMIS? So it's the Educational Management Information System. But essentially, it's everything that gets reported to the state. People who work with the data, take the data and submit it to the state, but they're not the generators of the data. You know, information, when we get a new student that's in our student information system, maybe there's a change in circumstance for that child. The data is generated through registration, or maybe some things at the building level change with it, or there's attendance information. But the people who work with this actual data is the submission of the data to meeting whatever deadline it is. Teaching and learning, Leanne works with all the assessments, but it's taking that data and then submitting it where it needs to go. There are three main areas to focus on for EMIS, and it's staff, student, and assessments. So essentially, it's taking all that information, who's teaching what students, what courses they're teaching, information about our students. A lot of this is all tied to money, so it's super important. But as I started mentioning earlier, who contributes to the data that's submitted to OD? Everyone. Down from the attendance secretaries who work with validating and making sure our attendance is accurate for our students. Our teachers putting grades in, our teachers administering assessments. So it's a huge project, and we'll talk a little bit more about it. As I mentioned to Mrs. Rysland the other day, that it's kind of a good opportunity to really rethink the process a little bit. So we haven't really started doing that yet, but there'll definitely be more to come on it. I'm learning a lot of things, though. You know, I knew about the systems and where you went to do things, but working with Connect, it's actually been very interesting. So it must be the geeky side of me, but I'm, I'm learning a lot. Questions? Thank you for listening. It was a little long, but.
No, thank you. I do have one question. With the increase of our district now using digital devices, like we've expanded from just managing technology in the buildings to now managing the students one-to-one, and also managing those tickets that's related to now student usage. And you indicated that you have the same staff.
We do.
So my question is, now that the district has transitioned so vastly to technology, are we sufficiently staffed to manage? And we're going to continue to grow, so technology is not going to go anywhere. I, I see it even in your goals for the next five years. There's plans for continuous expansion. Do we have the adequate support to manage this now that we've transitioned? And I know it all kind of happened during a pandemic, and is there a plan or is there a need for a plan to expand our IT department, just because the district is now, we, we heavily rely on so many different areas now?
Well, thank you for that. I mean, I certainly would never say no, okay? I would never, I would never say no. I would never say no. You know, I think that through, through the years of technology, even let's look at the pandemic. You know, when all of a sudden our students were home, we were now answering phone calls from parents, from students, from grandparents, because we were helping people remotely, so that whole thing changed. Our skill set from, let's say, fixing the Chromebooks now that we weren't necessarily doing before, or maybe we just didn't have as many, much damage because they weren't going home. So definitely, there's a huge volume. I think that the skill set of all of us is something that has greatly risen. I think in the future, we definitely need to look at employees that have technology degrees that are doing things with, you know, there's, there's definitely technology programs out there that know about repairing hardware and, and managing software. So I definitely think the skill set of the employees that we have, which has greatly increased. I think that there's definitely going to be a huge training piece or for future employees coming in with a skill set instead of learning it on the job. So I'd love to say more people, but, you know, I think that, I think that we're doing a really good job. I, I really do. And I, I think that, you know, as time goes on and we have more and more, you know, there's definitely always an opportunity for expanding staff, but it's definitely been a learning curve, all of this. But I always tell people, every year, it's really different what I do. I mean, some things are the same, but every year we have a different program, we have a different project, we have a different something, and we're all learning something new. So my daughters will tell you, they're twenty-seven and twenty-three now, but I always would come home, today I learned. Well, you name it, you know, if this breaks, don't do this or do this, you know, I just, it's part of the job, so.
Well, I would like to just commend you and your staff, because during the pandemic and transitioning our students and to make sure that they continue to have access to education, you guys were truly the boots on the ground, ensuring that you got everybody on board, not just the students, but you guys had to train parents, you guys had to train the staff. And without your department, our children would not have had access to education during the pandemic. So I personally want to thank you guys for your hard work.
There's people sitting behind me here, because there's no I in team.
And you guys absolutely just transitioned our district in a time of crisis. And it actually set us up. And just some of your work prior to the pandemic, I do want to acknowledge, because we were a little bit ahead of the curve with one-to-one than a lot of our neighboring districts. And so that came to, yes, you guys having a vision prematurely, and it allowed us to transition our students a lot smoother, but it was a lot of work, and you guys did a phenomenal job, and I would have never known it was just a team of five.
Thank you.
Supporting the school district during that time. And my question was just so, as the board, we're, you know, know that there may be a need, because technology is continuing to, to, to increase. It's not going anywhere, and it's just going to continue to evolve in education. So making sure that we continue to stay, you know, ahead of the curve.
I appreciate that very much.
Is there any other question?
Just thank you. Yes, you guys are amazing. Hands down, no questions about that. I just had a quick question, looking at the tickets by location. I just noticed that the middle school has the highest amount of tickets, might a little bit, but the highest amount. And I was just wondering if there were any specific factors
I think some of that is the age of the building, some of it. We have projectors in the building that are a little bit older, so some of it has been projectors. We've been replacing, Mr. Sullivan and I were just talking about that, because we need to get some more, do we have them in place? Because to have a projector down for a whole day is really not a good thing. So some of it is that. Now, sometimes teachers put tickets in for students, so where we had the one-to-one manager that we try and have all of our Chromebook tickets in, our teachers will put those in. And, you know, middle school is middle school for all of those reasons, right? Middle school kids, you know, you gotta love them, but it's a difficult age, so there's definitely, you know, some more breaking of things, their own personal devices, and not necessarily intentional, you know, but it's just middle school kids. So I think, I think it's probably a few of those factors. We actually don't have as much broken, not as much broken from our high school students, you know, they're a little bit mature. A little bit more responsible. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there any more questions for Mr.?
President Daniels, I apologize, if I may. One of the things I think we forgot to tie in, it just dawned on me, was we did a renovation of this room during COVID, and it really tied it nicely that Mr. Delby's having an honor. But Mrs. Bailey, you know, even here with us and our team in the Board of Education, she supports all of us, too. And, and, you know, in this room, you know, we, we heard her team, we did a speaker replacement, we've done a projector, a brand-new screen behind you, and, and all those things just, you know, help us to have really nice meetings and things like that, so.
Yeah, and connected us to streaming our meetings live via YouTube. Which gives the community greater access to the public meetings. And so that's phenomenal, because that's something that did not exist prior to the pandemic.
No, it didn't.
Oh, my God, she managed, like, everybody Zoom meetings and trainings and.
And then my cats that used to try and join. But there's a few of them in the board meetings, if you look. Well, thank you. I very much appreciate it.
Yes, thank you so much.
Now, when we found the most of the projector.
I know, right? Oh, is it right there? Thank you.
Item of discussion on our agenda tonight is our board discussion. And we have our board committees back on the agenda. We had this discussion our last work session, and we, as a board, requested Mr. Hanky to kind of gather some information for us. And you sent an email out to us regarding that. In the meantime, me and Mr. Hanky had an opportunity to have a conversation to, relative to the data that you sent over to the board. And Miss King was also very gracious to send us some, some information relative to our board committees and the continuation of that discussion. Wanted to first ask if anybody have any comments or any additional questions as it relates to this topic and solidifying how we're going to.
President Daniels, I, do you mind if I, just like that? I know President Daniels, during our conversation, mentioned that a starting place may be the liaison framework, because we do have a couple of new committees for the board. The legislative and finance committee, which are official committees that have been taken without minutes, by my own means. So that may be an opportunity, you know, to discuss that, because of the expansion of that. Just a thought.
Yes. I did have an opportunity to just talk to Mr. Hanky, because the work that we do in committees as a Board of Education would be to support the work that Mr. Hanky is doing to advance our strategic plan within the district. And in our discussion, I do feel like we, we really don't need any additional committees, but it would like, it would be nice if we operated the strategic plan pillars as liaisons and assign people. And they kind of operate like the student activities did for a while, where we don't necessarily sit on a committee per se, but if there is something pertinent going on in the district, some highlights, some lowlights, that they would like to share with the Board of Education, and it's not the month of that department, the liaison. The liaison can read that report on behalf of that department. Just say in particular, our teaching and learning pillar, because that was a big, that was a big discussion. So versus having a committee for teaching and learning, we just have a board liaison for teaching and learning. And if there's something phenomenal that's going on, a little highlight that Leanne would like for the board to know or something upcoming, not a detailed report, she can provide that to the liaison to read that report on behalf of that department for the month. I don't necessarily think it'd be something where we would require a monthly report. I think it would be at the discretion of the superintendent and the cabinet to determine if it was something pertinent that they wanted the board to know about and not necessarily their month to report. I think that would give us an opportunity as the Board of Education to kind of just be engaged in some of the work monthly that is going on in the district and that can help us support making the decisions that we make. I need to pull it up just to kind of, I do have it up, the ones that we were talking about. And so I think teaching and learning was one of under the wellness. So it's not necessarily that we're sitting on the committee helping to make decisions. We're just the liaison that's going to report some highlights that the superintendent and his cabinet may think is necessary for the board to report to the public in the Board of Education as, as they deem necessary to. I don't necessarily want to put, you know, expectation on them for monthly.
Madam President, I, I guess my question, comment, concern would be if the person is just if the person's just report, reading a report, I don't think we really need a specific liaison. That could be just a report that's submitted to the board and could be read and shared to the public by anyone on the committee. If there's not a tieback, I don't think we really need a specific liaison, anybody could do the report. So I don't understand what you're saying and I, I support it, but I don't think we actually need a specific liaison to just be right there. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Do you feel like a tieback is necessary is the question? I think it's just going to depend on which area we're talking about. I just, I this kind of, we just, we need to I don't think necessarily a tieback at this point because it's, again, it's not our job as the Board of Education to do the work. We just want to be well informed. So that as we're making decisions, we're making decisions that are well informed.
And I think the role the liaison that, that plays as far as the tieback goes is receiving that report and even communicating back to, to Mr. Hanky, just the particular board number A. You know, we, we had a discussion in the board meeting about whatever. Do teaching and learning have anything that they want to report into the board about what's going on? Just kind of like, how did it function for you being the liaison for student activities? Over this time, did you have any participation or how did that role function for you?
So Dale definitely sent out his monthly reports. But as the student activities liaison, I think sometimes I kind of took the initiative to ask Dale specific questions about specific things to get more information about student activities to relate to the board. Like when I look at the strategic pillars, I mean, the strategic plan pillars. I think, I, I feel like I would like to know more as a board member about like community and family engagement, like more often, like what we're doing. So I do think that the liaisons would be beneficial for us as board members just to share our, you know, thoughts and our opinions and feedback that we do have about the pillars with whatever district staff member is leading that specific department. So in that regard, I do think that tieback is important just for us at least to even have those discussions and share. You know, whatever board feedback we have, I just think about my position on the COVID task force. And you know, when there's a topic coming up, you know, I can reach out to board and be like, hey, do you have any updates to our feedback that you would like to share? Or if, you know, there's something in our community meeting that is of importance, I'm able to share that report with you all and you know, to keep you all informed more frequently than our meetings.
And I think to that point, Ashley, I think we're, I, I think when we are kind of
In limbo.
In limbo is if, say for instance, and I'm just going to pick on teaching and learning. So teaching and learning, if we had a liaison, if I'm hearing you correctly with your example, the task force you actually sat in on, we wouldn't necessarily be able to sit in on all of Leanne's meetings. So I think we have to figure out a way of which we get the information that we need around the, the, the pillars to make informed decisions and to make sure that, so for instance, with city liaison, I'm still winging it. You know, so it, I, I feel that we just, in some of the liaison positions and who, not necessarily committee structures. We just need more structure, structure. And like our, and then, you know, we talked about really eliminating the strategic plan committee, but maybe if we keep the strategic plan committee, that's the, we would work with Mr. Hanky and his cabinet in terms of not sitting in on all the meetings, but having a quarterly or five monthly meeting so that we do get an update on what's happening, ask any questions, relay things back to the board, get input if the board has input and then relay that information back. So maybe it is keeping the strategic plan not, maybe we change, maybe task force as opposed to committee and instead of having individual committees or liaison positions for each pillar. But that way we're just getting updated information that then we can relay back.
There's another way of maybe looking at it. I like the idea of changing the strategic plan committee to a strategic plan liaison and get, you know, those reports as often as we deem necessary. I think that's a solution.
Because that, in the end, it's just making sure that we have the information not to, to be in the middle of it, but just to get what we need. And making sure, and also making sure that the liaison roles and the committees, committees that we do have are serving the purpose of what we needed to do.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So if you have, if you have somebody on the strategic plan, then each month, then they report on each pillar. So the pillar would be reported on for next month would be, we're picking on teaching and learning, well, it'd be teaching and learning. And the next month would be wellness. Then the next month would be the finance or the
Community engagement.
Community engagement. So then each month, you are in an edge, at each board meeting, one of whoever's on that position will be reporting out and that's how you're informing the public of the work that is being done.
And then just rotates.
You got it.
I echo Mr. Pat's seven, this is a super tip. That's, that's, that's a, that's a pretty good idea, at least to start, you know, I mean, so we say, okay. When we look at this process, we say, is it working? What's that, you know, you know, we have to do a proof that, that's my, my thoughts.
We could start this in March. Obviously, what, you know, give us a little, I mean, obviously we have a meeting next week, but give us a March and then whoever decides to be that board member on that, then each of us will report out since the four of us are usually involved in each of the pillars. And then we'll give you the report, the report on the work that's being done and make a report out from there.
Or just we have a regular monthly report just on strategic plan period. Because I'm not looking for like you guys to do an expanded presentation. I just want you to be able to, if there's a nugget regarding this versus you waiting for your month, you have an opportunity to share that with the Board of Education monthly. So I can, I can see making it just one person and whatever nuggets, just a, a blowing, just, I, we don't need a presentation. And if there's something heavy going on where you guys feel like a presentation is necessary, then we could put that on the agenda. Because I think you already kind of cover all of these, some, you kind of have a schedule where we hear from everybody anyway, teaching and learning already have their months and all that kind of stuff. So just even if it's a strategic plan report out and if there's nuggets, I'm just looking for nut, I, I just think it's necessary for an opportunity for the board to receive highlights, you know, even lowlights, you know, things that and not necessarily waiting for your month, that you have an opportunity to share that because there's no place right now for those things to be shared monthly. So I could see it just being one strategic, a strategic, a strategic plan liaison that reports that out monthly. And it's just one report, okay, this month, the strategic plan wellness has this going on. Teaching and learning had nothing to report, you know what I'm saying? And, and literally like a few cents, like it's not a nugget or two, like I'm not.
Kind of like an executive summary per month on kind of what's going on.
Yeah, just small, just like, I mean, literally, I'm, I'm taking it back to student activities. It was just, hey, this month we bought two shirts. This is the highlight game. Then get into a whole presentation on what the shirts look like, how they decided what was, how much it costs. Just a little bit of information, but then when Dale came, comes to the board for additional funds or supports and student activities, we say, we hear from that department and that pillar every single month. So we, we have a connection already without a whole big spiel. You know, and so just little nuggets that the superintendent may deem necessary versus and that's narrowing it in. And then as we move forward with that, we may determine that there's more work to be done or one of those pillars may need more information shared, but just a simple strategic plan. And it may be nothing some months, you know, so, and I don't, you know, it's just what you deem necessary to keep the board engaged in the work that aligns with the strategic plan.
President Daniels, here's what I'm hearing. What we'd like, I, I think what I'm hearing is we'd like to have a standing agenda item for a strategic plan.
Yes.
And that would be kind of a summary kind of thing. And like, like you said, there's something heavier and we need our presentation, like hint, hint, Alan, I might be talking about the middle school next month in the presentation. That's the, you know, I mean, so, but if there's just some things that are going on, we can, we can just look at it and a pretty easy report out, ala the athletic type of thing. Does that make some sense?
That's what I think, what, what align in entirety.
What's, for us, so let's, let's put, let us put something together for March and see how, how, you know, how it looks and how it feels for everyone. Does that make some sense?
I just want to make this the liaison position, I think the liaison.
Or do we just want to make it a report, a strategic plan report? Because
We can just make it, yeah.
A standing item on the agenda because there's no need of having a liaison. Well, we can take turns each month reading the report, but I don't think it really needs to be a a liaison. It's just, it's just a report that we, a standing committee report, a standing, not committee report, but a standing report on the agenda, just an agenda item.
I think, yes, but I do know that, I guess I gotta go to Mr. Hanky. You developed the strategic plan committee with, and it wasn't just a board member in particular that was assigned to it. It was the board president, a boy, or vice president assigned to that committee. Do you still feel it necessary or would you like for us to continue to sit and support the work in that committee? And then either one of us can report, you know, whatever he thinks to set out.
I kind of like the structure we're, we're kind of talking about here. Another suggestion, thanks, Mr. Sullivan. We do have five pillars. If a board member would like to take a pillar, is, is kind of a liaison structure, we can look at something like that actually like, okay, that's fine. I did, we just put it out there. So, but you know, let's, I think let's try this report out next. And, 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 because I think that's also going to give me an opportunity in my team to give highlights to the board that are completely aligned with the strategic plan once a month. It's going to give us a mechanism, another tracking mechanism where, where we're able to say, okay, within, and again, it is this this, this, right key said, it is, it's become a very large spreadsheet that we use. You know, okay, here's where we are with this. You have things that are very measurable. Hey, we've got the replacement plan that we're replacing with two hundred and ten Chromebooks, right? We're looking at some facilities things listed up there. Then we look at some of the teaching and learning aspects that are really more ongoing and structural. So I think, I think that would be helpful.
I think it'd be something that, not to put all of you guys on the spot, but facilities and resources, Al can give two bullets on that.
Sure.
Teaching and learning are pillar around DEI and hiring the staff and, you know, I think that.
Well, I think, you know, this is work that's already going on and we give us a function report.
To be able to report it out, yeah.
And just show our various departments that the Board of Education is supporting and acknowledging the hard work the guys are putting into advancing the strategic plan, which in turn will advance our student achievement. And, and that's my biggest thing. Just want to make sure that don't want to go below the line, but having engagement on what the work you guys are doing helps us make our decisions that we do have to make here at the board. And hopefully, you know, the feedback that the Board of Education give you guys shows that we, you have our support, you know, and and, and we're here to work a line and want to see the work that you're doing and showing the community too that we're doing the work beyond just the, the days that it falls on the agenda, the month, once a year, it falls on the agenda. I think it will help us, I, I just think it will help me personally just to understand, it's a lot of great things that happen in our district that support the advancement of our students and being able for you guys to kind of share those things. And I think it'll tie in into decision making. And we'll, and we'll also sometime, maybe something that come up, we need a report, we can put that on the next agenda, you know, for us to actually have a presentation.
President Daniels, we can put that on in March?
Yes.
Report out.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can we go through each one of the major reports, just, I think that we made, that you made some changes and appointments that I don't think are reflected. And I think we also changed, I know, I think we were changing city liaison, the city and communities, something.
Should we wait for that to the agenda review? Can we finish our board committee?
Yes, I'm sorry, I picked up the wrong agenda.
Like a firm decision if it's gonna be a liaison or report.
Um, the strategic plan committee um monthly report can be um. That report can be made by one of the committee members. So Mister Hanky has a superintendent committee, or what do you call that?
Yeah, you can call it superintendent's committee, I was thinking of of.
Or have I, yes, so.
I I know we're jumping around here, but like, you know, within a, within an agenda, you can put it on as a standing presentation. Uh even if it's a report, it it like as an agenda, it 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 could lay within the standing presentation piece.
But yeah, and then just so you know, when you're looking at the regular agenda. On there is a um strategic plan committee, we really didn't have a strategic plan committee established.
Board committee.
Board committee, we had a strategic plan, I think.
Superintendent's committee.
Yeah, yeah, it was kind of like a.
You kind of have strategic plan meetings.
Right.
And invite.
Talking about, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've eliminated that off the the committee reports, because there really wasn't such a committee that was on there. But it wasn't a board established committee. I know it's kind of like a.
Are we taking that off?
Yes. Take that off.
Is there any other questions or discussions, so moving forward. We're we're keeping our committees as we're not doing the, we had a few name changes, but we're not doing the pillar liaisons, we're not going to. Have those liaisons, we're just gonna have Mister Hanky, someone from his committee reports standing each month, um if there's some highlights relative to those. I'll be, yeah, that's clearly just sort of managed completely before that.
So I'm calling it a strategic plan superintendent committee, which um with no liaisons for the pillars and the nerves, it's just gonna be a monthly report out. The committee will monthly report out on um relative topics for that time.
Yeah. And Mister Hanky always let us know if he feels like his presentation is necessarily a prior to, so. The next item on our. We're like going back and forth between the two agendas. Tentative agenda review. So one item I do know that we need to discuss as far as the tentative agenda is the committee reports and how they're labeled on the um. Agenda, uh one of my recommendations is that if um Mister Saluka can go back and review the minutes. From when we requested the name changes for a few of them and um amend the agenda.
Okay.
Per.
Yep.
Those changes that we voted on. Is my recommendation, just because we voted on this.
I'm not sure we voted on this, that's the issue, I don't sure we really can, we tabled it, we didn't really vote on it per se, because I think that we were gonna bring this up for further discussion. So we can um establish the new names at the regular meeting, we can have those on there. We might like finalize that tonight and we can. We can confirm, yeah.
You confirmed it already?
I can, well, I can, I I don't have my my notes here, but I can get those to do that, let me see if I can.
Cause I know we tabled a few of them, but not all of them.
Couple of the.
Yeah. I think we voted on student activities.
Yeah.
And city liaison. And tabled the others. Um, why does it look set up, is there any other items um up for discussion?
So we did, um at the organizational meeting, we didn't really vote on them, but we were discussing um. Changing the student activity layers on the wellness. I think that that's, and we appointed someone. To that. So I think that that's, if that's.
And I think we changed the city liaison, and I thought that we tabled the other one.
Right, and we changed the city liaison to community and family engagement.
And we tabled.
And we and we and we tabled the student achievement liaison and we tabled the DEI liaison. And I think that those are the two that were in discussion right now. For for at that meeting in the organizational meeting, so we can change, since we appointed somebody, we talked about wellness, we can change that to wellness liaison in the agenda. And if I'm if I'm reading this right, the wellness liaison is no longer student activities, and that appointment was Heather.
Yeah.
So we'll change the name.
Activities or student achievement? No, it was stu- the wellness was, we didn't do anything with student achievement.
Student achievement liaison, we kind of worked, because I think what we were end up talking about is we have no defined. Um parameters of what that would look like and what the responsibility of the student achievement liaison. Would be, and I think that was also tying into.
OSBA.
OSBA saying that you needed one, which we also, we have an OSBA delegate. That represents the district, so that was there, and then the other one was BBI, and I think again, we were trying to. As a board decide on what are the parameters for that liaison, and we're gonna bring that back around at a later date.
Some of our recommendations is that we um. We change on our, amend the gender.
We'll do that, you can do that right now.
And I don't think the other ones are not on there, so. Is there anything else?
I didn't have another question about the agenda. And eleven for Ms. Wilson's um. What is our plan for family engagement last month?
We're gonna be working with Ms. Wilson, I'm I'm figuring that out on this time, so you know, we're gonna have to uh take on some of those duties probably up here. Uh to cover if we gotta, uh to make sure there's continuity there, so Kevin will be working on that.
Did she work with anybody like on the building, like the, like the admissions teams? Like the principals?
Yeah, all the principals, yeah.
People that do work, she's just kind of leaving.
There are, but we wanna make sure especially like basic services that are, that like utilities and various things that we do, she does help with quite effectively, you wanna make sure that that work continues. And 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 go from there, so. Beyond the other program.
Is there any questions regarding um the agenda? The tentative agenda and recommendations? Anything you guys would like to highlight on the agenda?
Yeah, sure, I'm actually, item eighteen, um this is the first time we partnered with an outside agency to have someone uh in one of our buildings uh during the school day, five days a week. Uh we believe, as I, as I spoke in um an earlier board meeting this year about some of the challenges we've had with social emotional wellness. Uh of students and families, uh the heart-to-heart agency has been working with some of our students as clients. Uh this particular MOU will allow us to have someone from that agency, a trained mental health professional. Um act uh in work with uh students at large. Um uh in terms of some other, some other issues such as conflict mediation, but also then hopefully uh connect them with some services too. There are some um situations that uh I think we're going to be able to improve upon in terms of student relationships. That uh uh happened quickly, uh that will help us here, I don't mean to be speaking euphemistically, but basically. You have a situation where you, I think you're able to really improve the climate development. And um you know, as all things, because it's a new endeavor, uh if it works out well. Uh we can look at expansion, I'm using that agency and other agencies uh down into the other levels, we just knew that our highs need right now, it's with high school.
If their particular region chose to expand this agency?
Uh capacity, Miss Thomas, and I I did, you know, for lack of a better word, delegated that to uh. Doctor Dupree, who believe that this agency has the capacity to handle the workforce.
And they, this agency is doing, doing some of this work at Maplewood, if I'm right, correct?
Yes, and also we have a kind of a proof of concept at another school district, uh where they're, where they're doing this this type of work, they're doing work with clients that may like. One, you know, clients, they have clients throughout the district, uh but we do have another school district that's near us that is utilizing our services, so.
So this, to my understanding, this agency is stationary in our buildings, like every day.
One person.
One person, right.
Right.
No matter.
So they can work with intervention managers, they can work with building administration, uh guidance councils, et cetera. To help with uh some of the things, and also no, no, like, it's kind of a liaison, there are more connections, there are more services.
Um. Item number nineteen, can you explain why we have this on the agenda for the first time, right? I think you guys said this was something that we had to now pay for.
It's not new to, we do, the the board does have to do a resolution every year to join OHSA, but OHSA now does have a payment. Structure because um, to be frank, they they their operating budget was completely decimated during COVID. Uh it, they make all of their operating money through tournaments, and uh if you've ever been to any of the state tournaments, basketball, wrestling, by the way. Back to the rafters, it's the Schottenstein Center, you're talking about a lot of, and all the regional tournaments, uh so all of their money they need to operate. Which is important, all of, every one of our sports uh was was gone uh during the pandemic, so. Uh they proposed this to the districts, uh and and they do have a voting mechanism and a board of directors, and OHSA includes educators. Uh and they all found them dementable, uh that's why we're asking the board for adoption as well. And you know, already uh the tournaments are opened up, so hopefully their revenue streams will improve and. That's gonna help all the student athletes in this state.
This is just where we're at right now.
Yep.
Any other um comments or questions or discussion relative to the regular board meeting, um tentative agenda? If there's not any other questions or um discussion. Will. Move on to the next item, is there any um Board of Education training updates? You want to have any updates? Would it be a no updates? Remove target.
Real quick, I'd hate to interrupt, but everybody you receive, when I go in and register for OSBA, they're supposedly sending you the email, so you get into your, and there was no issues getting into each of the meetings, I mean. For this past month.
I don't need coming up later.
Yeah, and I know the ors, the northeast, did that take place yet?
March then.
Okay, that's the one in Maslin. So you're getting the emails that you registered for these um events, I hope, that's right, I I'm assuming that OSBA is is, I put your emails on those.
Yes, I got the Maslin one and the two oh one.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I'm just, I just wanna make sure, because they're supposed to, and I and I'm assuming they do, but I'm going, wait a minute. Cause I don't get those emails, because I put your email address on me on registration.
I would say in the past, I've never had an issue with.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah, in the past, I've never had an issue. But I'll just confirm for you. Okay, um. Our um a motion to enter into executive session. Um for the purposes of discussing negotiation and personnel matter.
The move.
Mister Saluka, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms., I mean Mister Juby. Can I call her please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Mister Juby?
Yes.
Miss Morrison?
Yes.